Okay, great, thank you. Good evening, welcome to the seventh meeting of the Milton Planning Board. Today is November tenth and this meeting is being both recorded and broadcast live. My name is Emily Ennis, I'm the chairman, and I'll ask the other members to introduce themselves.
Granny Lynch, member.
Alex Whiteside, member.
Dave Duffy, member.
Peter Jackson, secretary.
Bill Clark, planning director.
Diane Coligan, secretary.
Okay, we've got a few administrative items to get through. I apologize for the late start, it's a little wet outside at the moment. First item on our agenda is the approval of the past minutes, which are the minutes of October twenty-seventh. Has everyone had a chance to review them?
These are my suggestions.
Okay. Okay, I'm gonna read them out, I think, and then they should not be-
Or we could just pass them around.
We could pass them around, but then we've got a lot of time where we're just sitting around staring at these papers.
We could pass them around during Citizens Speak.
Then we're gonna be focusing on citizens. Or we could simply defer them to our next meeting, so rather than reading them aloud. There are-
Let me give these to the secretary.
Have a look. Okay, while you're having a look at those, the next scheduled Planning Board meeting is November twenty-first at six-thirty in John Cronin Conference Room. We will also be having a meeting December eighth, and at some point during this meeting, we're going to discuss our second meeting in December. What do you think?
One question. Did you say, oh, meeting is December the eighth?
December the eighth, it should be a Thursday, right?
Mm-hmm. What night is the, Janice's party?
Same night.
Same night, the conflict. Lady up in the building department, Janice Freeman, they're having a retirement party that night.
Okay.
So maybe we could consider changing it?
Why don't we talk about that after we get through our business and we can figure out which two dates would work best in December. Parties remind me that, Mr. Duffy, I'm going to ask you to set up a very special party after our meeting on November twenty-first-
Gotcha.
-at which we say goodbye to our long-term clerk, who is moving on to other things. Diane will be leaving us, I believe the twenty-first is your last meeting?
Yes.
So we are very sorry, you've done a fantastic job for us. And we'll have, if it works with your schedule, we'll have a little celebration directly after the meeting.
Thank you.
So.
But today's meeting.
All right, I'm going to move on to Citizens Speak. Now, we have one public hearing, one thirty-one Elliott Street, which is scheduled for seven o'clock. We also have old business, five ninety-seven Randolph Avenue. I'm told that the paper advertised that we were opening that discussion at seven-thirty.
Editorial.
Okay, so there may be some confusion there. I just want to let people know that if they want to speak to that issue now, that's fine, we welcome your comments. If you want to stay until we actually come up to that, that's fine too, so however anybody wants to do that. So I'll ask anybody coming forward to Citizens Speak to come forward. If it looks like there's a ton of people, we'll start a sign-up sheet, but, yep, you can come after. All right. Introduce yourself and address for the record.
I'm here this evening and let Mr. Sullivan hear also to hear what I have to say. You will recall that I was present at one of your meetings in the spring. Making aware of that, that there was construction in the street, digging up the street by K and K, for which there had been no advance warning, and so it was for the neighbors and especially for me, it was a huge inconvenience because I had Save-A-Tree coming to spray my maples to save the trees. Had we been forewarned about that meeting, not meeting, but that work, I would have made another appointment with the Save-A-Tree. As it turned out, I thank Karen for being there to back the truck into my driveway. Unfortunately, almost hit, the poor driver, the poor technician, almost hit my house. And as I said, it would have been better had it had been rescheduled with it being its notice. I call your attention to the third amendment to the special permit, the site plan approval. This was the third amendment sought by Mr. Sullivan for the construction of Thirty-Sixth Central Avenue. The Board of Appeals had conditioned the variances upon the applicant appointing a clerk of the works or point person to deal directly and responsibly with the butters and nearby interested citizens during the construction of the project, and to mitigate construction activities on nearby properties. I pointed out to you, read this to you at that meeting, pointed out that this had not been followed. It goes on, right in the permit itself, to say, Paul J. Sullivan has been designated point person and has the responsibility to deal directly and responsibly with the butters and nearby interested citizens during construction of the project. This permit also transfers the permit to the Oremo, but it doesn't transfer Paul out of this as the clerk of the works, the point person on the construction. In fact, it does provide an out, if he's not available, or if he chooses no longer going to be the point person, then a new person can be selected. That has not happened. I was advised by Karen, not Mr. Sullivan, Karen, that the road was gonna be torn up today to put in the new tar over the part that Oremo's had dug up earlier for the wire and sewer connection, as well as the gas. I was also informed by Karen that I would, if I wanted to go in and out, I would have to move my car. And there were all kinds of police no parking signs put all over the section, both on the Thirty-Sixth side and on the opposite side, saying, "No parking." In spite of that, the two people who have been, two of the thirteen or more that have been parking there all day, strictly, just didn't pay any attention to the no parking and put their cars there. One of them was there before five-thirty in the morning, because that's when I got up to get my cup of coffee and to move my car up Maple Street, in violation of the two-hour limit there, of course, so that I would have a place to put my car. Meanwhile, they were parked there. Nothing has been done about putting in those one-hour parking settings. I think that Mr. Clark owes us an explanation. But, I pointed out to Karen, when he told me that this was going to happen, I said, "Well, Paul Sullivan is supposed to notify us by email." He said, "Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna contact Paul." I went down, "Would I please advise the neighbors?" I went to my next-door neighbor and I went to the three little businesses down at the corner, the plates, the elderly and Keith with his wine shop, told them, so that they could have their customers know they couldn't park there. I looked from the email, there was no email. Paul has the ten emails of the people that first met with him. No one was contacted, other than me trying to tell some of the neighbors that this was going to happen. This is in strict violation of this permit, and I'm bringing this to your attention. In case you decide to make any other arrangements for Paul in the future, to note that he does not live up to the conditions of a special permit. And I'm glad he's here, well, was, to hear it.
Thank you very much. The next person who signed up is Jeanne and Jim Conley. And again, introduce yourself and give your address. Hi.
Hi, Jeanne Conley.
Jim Conley, we live at twenty-six Wildwood Road, and we wanted to talk about the Randolph Ave land. And first of all, thank you for allowing us to speak. We have lived at twenty-six Wildwood Road, and we are director butters, so our backyard literally backs up to the church property.
Okay, just to clarify, it's five ninety-seven Randolph Avenue.
Yes, yeah. And we are actually also actively involved in the church. I'm on the parish finance council, but I'm here representing kind of butter, not the church. So we just wanted to talk about the property. We've been watching that property for a number of years, because, you know, we've lived at the house for nine years, and it's been vacant ever since we've been there, and we knew eventually something was gonna go in there. So, we have met with the developer a couple of times, which is a, which is a good sign. We met with him when he first started talking to St. Elizabeth's, I think about eighteen months or twenty-four months ago, as part of the council, but he's met us a couple of times, and we actually had the neighborhood over for a meeting this past Monday night. We had seventeen people come over, where Anthony came over and presented his, his plan. And the absolute overall feel of the meeting was that we want to make sure it maintains residential, it's zone residential, we want to keep it as a residential property. So that was the, that was the main thing. We also felt it was a, it was a very good sign, that he was there willing to work with us and was hearing our concerns. Wildwood Road is a, is a very nice neighborhood residential area, fifteen-plus kids under the age of fifteen on that little side street, so we want to keep it residential, because it's a very nice place for, for the kids to grow up, and it's quiet, so, again, we understand something's gonna go in there, but it's zone residential, so we feel it should, it should stay residential. I also should mention that our neighbor, Mr. Hanwell, is an elderly gentleman who's been in town for years and years. He's, he's our neighbor, he's a director butter, and he couldn't make it to the meeting tonight, but I talked to his son last night, and he said that he's with us as well, in terms of the way, the way we're feeling. We also have been very encouraged that Father Walsh is committed to keeping this a residential, zoned area as well. Looking at the plans that the developer showed us, and we have been actively watching the Planning Board meetings, we actually, I know there's been discussion about parking, we like the parking in the front. Parking in the back would be, would mean lights in our, in our backyard, and also for Mr. Buckley, I don't think it would be fair for him either, somebody had mentioned having to park and going up alongside. That would be right along his, his way as well. So, other than that, I, again, I just think it was encouraging that the developer seems to be willing to work with the neighbors when this project moves forward. I'm sure as we get more into the details, we'll have more detailed questions, but we wanted to let everyone know that the neighborhood is actively engaged. We all, I think, are of the same ilk to, to keep this residential, and we look forward to, for the Planning Board to continue to work with Anthony to move this project forward.
Great, thank you very much for your comments. The next person on the list, Sheila Foley O'Brien. If I got that right.
My name is Sheila Foley O'Brien, and my family and I live at fifty-eight Clifton Road. And so we two are neighbors of the old rectory project. And I'm also, as Mr. Conley just said, he's on the parish council, I too am on the parish council. It's a great neighborhood that we live in, and we're actively involved in what is going on in the neighborhood. My husband and I, we've anxiously followed the process for the old rectory on Randolph Ave because of its proximity to our home. And I want to let you know that the neighbors have had an opportunity to meet Mr. Resido, to discuss the project, learn his objectives, and voice any concerns that the neighborhood may have for the project. It's been an open process. My husband and I wholeheartedly support his plans to construct townhomes on this property. As a residential project, it stays true to the character of our neighborhood and the community that exists within the greater Milton community. I respectfully ask the Planning Board to work with Mr. Resido to construct townhomes at the old property, the old rectory on Randolph Ave, and change the zoning to allow multifamily homes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Stephen O'Donnell?
I'll defer until later.
Okay. Paul Sullivan?
Good evening, my name is Paul Sullivan, twenty-one Smith Road. I just wanted to speak about Pleasant Street, Deer Run Lane. We started constructing the lane and just feel like sixteen feet might be excessive asphalt, and wonder if the board would consider reducing it to fourteen feet. We'd still construct the sixteen-foot width and compact and put suitable material in, but we'd just like to reduce the surface, we've got a little lodge for the area, and we also may want to just, we'll be retaining all to the right easily direction, a few feet. We have to maintain a setback from the property line, so we can't move it that much, but we may want to move it a couple of feet, move it away from the edge of the pavement. I have spoken to Driscolls, when originally we proposed this, and they have a low area next to their property, their backyard was filled, and they, they were open to the idea of maybe raising the grade on their prop, on the edge of their property, so there wouldn't be such a difference between the two properties. I tried to reach them this week, and I wasn't able to, I'm trying to try to meet this weekend to discuss the plan.
The question for the board is whether or not this change would be a de minimis change. If it's de minimis, he could come to us on November twenty-first, and we could discuss it. Obviously, it's not an agenda item to discuss tonight. If it's not de minimis, then it's a change that would require new public hearings, so we would need to start advertising that. Any thoughts? Yes?
This is Citizens Speak, I would suggest that this is called anything that we can discuss tonight.
So put it on the agenda for the board.
I think he should file an application, and we will then discuss whether or not we feel the application concerns a de minimis change. And if we're of the opinion that it does, then we will treat it one way, and if we feel that it is not, we will treat it another way, and at the very least, we will have plans to look at to make our determination.
Fair enough. Any other thoughts, agreements?
Just one question.
Yes.
Is the weather, the impending weather for winter, is that gonna affect what you do? In other words, a lot of the stuff you're gonna have, so?
No, we intend to construct the, we already started building the lane. We're gonna continue with the work and hope to have it done by the end of the month. And as I said, we're gonna bring in gravel material, a full sixteen feet or probably more than that, so it'll be set up whether we asphalt it fourteen feet or sixteen, if we're able to be honest.
So would you be able to get an application to us for November, our November twenty-first meeting?
I could file tomorrow.
Okay. Then why don't we do that, we'll put you on the agenda for the twenty-first, and then discuss whether or not it constitutes de minimis.
Okay.
Yep?
Valance Chair, refresh me, please. Will this be a public way or private way, Paul?
It's private, private.
Private way?
Thank you.
Okay, great, thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
The next person on the list, it looks like it's Carrie, but I'm not sure, it's a signature rather than, oh. Introduce yourself and leave your presence.
Kevin Burke, sixteen Wildwood Road. I am an butter to Mr. Buckley on Wildwood Road, and I'm just here to go on record to say that, as Jimmy Conley and Jeanne Conley said, the neighborhood is completely behind any residential opportunity that is going in on that lot. And we look forward to having, continuing the dialogue with you, the Planning Board, and hopefully you can work with the developer, who seems to be pretty affable and flexible and available to, to opinions that you might have. And I would think as a Planning Board, you would be somewhat positive to a developer that took the neighborhood's interest in heart, keeping the character of the neighborhood at heart, versus something that just said, "Look, this is what we're gonna do, we're not gonna work with anybody, and we can and we will do this." I'm just on record to say that sixteen Wildwood Road, pretty much all the neighbors on that street would like to keep residential.
Thank you very much. Ron Buckley?
Hi, thank you for letting me speak tonight. I had three points. Number one, I also met with the developer, and I was, I was here at the last meeting to voice some concerns, and I was happy to, to have the opportunity to talk to the developer about my concerns. He seemed very flexible and wanted to, wanted to address all the concerns, not only of myself and the other butters, but the, the adjacent neighbors as well.
Okay.
Number two, I'd like to echo my, my neighbor's concerns about that, that the property remained residential, zone residential. And lastly, when I was here, I believe it was two weeks ago, I know that there was a suggestion to the developer to have the entrance to that property be on Reedsdale Road. Since then, I had an incident happen in front of my house, where I was, I was driving into, into, coming off Randolph, going into my house in Reedsdale, and the, the traffic behind me was, was just surging so quickly that they, they had to slam on their brakes when I went into my, went into my driveway. And that was the first time, excuse me, that was the first time that happened to me. And then I, I immediately harken back to the conversation that I overheard last time with the Planning Board, and I was thinking that the entrance would be fifty feet further towards the intersection at that point, you know, so my word.
I actually wanna move back, but, rather than towards the intersection, but go ahead.
Oh, towards my property?
Yeah.
Okay.
Away from the intersection.
Well, either, either way, I think it's, I think just because of the traffic flow, the pattern there, I think it would be a bad idea to have a Reedsdale at all, right? I think because of the traffic flow, it could be much better to have none of Randolph Avenue.
Okay.
That was just an observation, it depends on how you do it.
Why do you think the Randolph Avenue is, would be better?
Because of the way that, the way that traffic comes down Randolph, it's already coming to a stop at that stoplight.
Unless it's green.
True. Right? But people are more, are more apt to be stopping there than, it's, it's like a raceway. When the light turns green coming off Randolph, people just automatically hit the gas and go, right? And to have someone stop right after that green light, it tends to be more of a problem, I believe.
Okay, well, we'll certainly-
Continue discussing.
If it has to be thought about, because it's a terrible place for a driveway, whether it's on Reedsdale or Randolph Avenue.
We'll continue that discussion during the main part, thank you.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you. Stephen O'Donnell?
I'll defer until later.
Till, oh, till, all the way to the, all right. Anybody else wants to speak for Citizens Speak? Okay, if not, it looks like it is seven o'clock and time for our public hearing. On you go, welcome.
My architect is late.
Okay.
Who has the presentation, so whoever you want to handle it.
We may want to wait. Bill, do you have anything for us as far as a planner's report, so?
Sure, but I don't think it's gonna take that long, but-
Okay. Have a seat, Stephen, and we've, we've got a couple of things we can fill in on.
It could be annoying.
We have a few things we can fill in on this, so.
I've been working with the engineering department reviewing the proposed reconstruction and rebuilding of High Street. In order to do that, you have to go back and get the original plans, and in our current, we're talking late eighteen hundreds up to, I think, the, the most current one that I saw was nineteen twenty-five, the High Street. So it goes from thirty to twenty-eight feet, so it hasn't been built in a while. Win Turbine, I've been dealing with the appeals documentation.
Valance Chair.
Yeah?
Can I go back to High Street, Bill, first?
Yep.
I'm sorry, but if you recall, with the reconstruction of the DeWolff Building, I mentioned on High Street about the wall, condition of the wall, and I think it should be determined that that wall is on the private property and does need more than just repointing it. If anyone takes a look at it, I think they'll agree with me, that the wall needs attention, more than just repointing. So I, I did say that, though, because I did discuss that in the past year. Okay, thank you, thank you, Valance Chair.
Under Green Communities, I've been dealing with paperwork for the, for the state grants, and we've actually been achieving, achieving pretty good energy savings. Examples are, we've installed a streetlight down on Central Ave, up in front of Industry Street. It's an LED light. It uses fifty-five watts, whereas every other light out there is a hundred and seventy-five watt light. So far, I haven't heard anybody say anything on the negative side of it. It throws as much, if not more, light than the ones that are out there, and it's a defined beam that goes down. Out in the hallways, you'll notice that the color out in the hallway is a little bit different, because we changed out all the lights out in the hall, so that they're actually LED lights at fifteen watts, and it can, it carries a sixty-five watt bulb. In the schools, we changed up, we're changing out probably first weekend in December, a hundred and seventy lights just in the Pierce School. The sewer pump stations are getting new drives of those motors. The payback on those motors is less than three months. So, it's because of the grant that we had and a source of money that we could go back and start looking to save more. But between Bill Ritchie and myself, it's, I find the project, he finds more money to add to the projects. Actually, it's been pretty good cooperation and, and then just dealing with different paperwork. I know that you're going to be looking at a home occupation-
Yes.
-and some assisted living language-
Yep.
-coming in the next month, who will come beginning of December.
Yeah, and we can talk about that a little bit more under the potentials running articles.
Right. And that's it.
Can I add to this time?
Did you, let me ask one question, then it's all yours, Bernie. November seventeenth, did you post for us going to the Selectmen's meeting?
Yes, I did, November, I said it because I wrote it bottom in the meeting. And we can say it here too. November seventeenth, the Selectmen are going to give a presentation on the Community Preservation Act. The Planning Board has been invited, the Warrant Committee, the Conservation Commission. I'm sure that the Historic Commission should be there, the Park Department should be there. Anybody that, that wants to, the meeting is going to be held at the Council on Age, because they're expecting a fairly big crowd. And our SVPs would be appreciated to the Selectmen's office, because they need to put together how many packets for printouts.
And I believe we were sent a copy of the electronic version of the last report.
Yes, it's quite large.
It is quite large. I looked at printing it out and realized that I want to kill quite that many trees, just to have-
When we gave it, when we gave that report out to the department heads, we gave it out as a CD,
Okay.
not as a paperback. If anybody's interested in the CD, let me know, or-
All right. Bernie, you have a question?
Seventeen Canton and a half, how does that stand?
They are actually moving forward. If you looked at the plan very carefully, you would have seen, when they moved the building one foot away from Peabody's property, all they're moving is the floor, on the first floor. They've taken the rest of it off, and they'll put it back on afterwards. And they came in for their building permit last week, beginning of last week, so they're supposed to be moving ahead very quickly.
Have they moved the floor yet? Because we, we're trying to do this old house episode now, and that would be something great for everyone in town to see it, so.
They're, they're actually going to take big pieces of the building away. Like the addition on the back that used to be the garage, that will just be taken off. The second floor will be taken off, the walls around the first floor will be preserved, taken off, and then it will be removed.
It's gonna be, make, make for a great show.
Okay, I will call Mr. Christopher and have him get in touch with my-
Is that it?
No.
No?
Okay. That's it?
That's it? Law, you're not here yet? Okay, so if you don't mind, I think we're gonna go ahead with five ninety-seven Randolph Avenue, and then we'll come back to you when we're done with that, because we have a lot of people here for that one. Anthony, do you wanna come up and join us? Tell us what you have. Brockley?
Anthony Resido, Development of Ninety-two Randolph Street. I don't have any time for plans. The reason for that is I took your advice. I took your advice, and I'm trying to get the extra time needed to plan the project properly for the May meeting. So Father Walsh and Doc Shea are helping me deal with the arch diggers and get the extensions needed, so that we can have the time we need to plan the project properly. In the meantime, we have been-
Um, in the meantime, we have been playing with some, um, some sketches and some layouts, as well as I met with the neighbors, as you're already here, um, as you have already heard. So, um, yeah, we're working on it, we're trying to get our extensions, and we're taking neighborhood feedback. The neighbors have been great, we've been working together, trying to come up with a good plan and so we can come in front of you folks and try and make it better. That's it, we've been working, but nothing for tonight.
Okay, so then let me just recap so that everybody's aware. Um, we will not be going to the special town meeting in January.
That's the goal, yeah, I just don't think we have the time, I agree with you folks.
This was the last night, so if we don't have it, we don't have it, yeah, okay.
It wasn't even worth it.
All right, so we'll continue to work for the annual town meeting in, uh, May. I think personally, uh, I'll let the other members of the board join in, but I think personally that will do much better for you um, and for the project as a whole, so that's great. Uh, I certainly commend you for meeting with the neighbors. You have my email of the thirty-first,
I do.
of the sort of thing that we'd want to see when we start talking about it, so that's good. Um, so just so everybody's aware of what the process would now be in going for the May annual town meeting, what has to happen is that if the planning board chooses to support this, which since we're all working together, hopefully, we'll be able to come up with something, that needs to be in substantially final form for the Board of Selectmen the first week in January. So, we're going to need to keep an eye on that because we've got holiday meetings, uh, or holidays coming up, and that always messes up the meeting schedule, so we will need to keep in contact about what those dates will be. Once that goes to the Board of Selectmen, they will open and close the warrant. Um, and then, once the article is officially on the warrant, um, then the planning board will hold public hearings on that, which will allow the public to come in and comment. There may be changes to the plan zoning because of that. Um, that then goes to the warrant committee and then finally to, into, for inclusion in the warrant, hopefully with the recommendation if we meet all our time goals. And then, uh, goes to the May annual town meeting for town meeting member vote. Now, just so people, because I've had some questions on, well, what does that mean for construction? Once it goes to the May annual town meeting, it then goes to the Attorney General. Uh, assuming it's been passed by town meeting, it would go to the Attorney General, who typically takes several months to agree that it has been passed properly. If the Attorney General agrees, then it becomes the bylaw and an application can be made for construction. And that's where we get into the real degree of how the project is developed. So, right now, we're trying to establish the parameters under which zoning can be written. So, having said all of that, I'm going to ask the board members for any comments, and then I'm going to open it up for any public questions on that, yes.
I just have one more question. Um, so after town meeting, it goes to the Attorney General's office?
Yes.
How long does that typically, typically take?
It can take a couple of months.
At least a couple of months.
So, I think, Bill, we've had, so, May town meeting, September, does it spend as long as that? Okay.
Also, from last May, just this September, they've been, projects have been approved, is that what you're saying?
May to September, usually it's in September that they send us a letter saying, um, they've approved the articles.
Okay.
That doesn't mean that you can't go forward with your plans, but you run the risk that there was a technical flaw that the AG might reject. What's happened?
We usually get, um, January and February, town meetings don't really get approved until a week of May, tell me? Um, sometimes it doesn't come until right after that. Um, we do try to cover, if it didn't get passed yet, we try to do it again so that if it missed for some reason, we try to address that.
But for the, uh, May, you should get it in September, so you could continue doing plans. And what has happened before in zoning articles, as I recall, is sometimes the AG will strike out a sentence. I don't think we've ever had, we had an article, no, we did have that one, the, the timing was wrong. So, as far as the advertising. So, uh, so we'll just make sure that we've dotted our i's and crossed our t's.
Okay.
Do the board members have any questions? Alex, I saw your hand first, and then I saw Pete.
Uh, we're happy to work with you, and it's, it's good you met with the neighbors, but saying that you want it to be residential, I think that, uh, that's a given. It's going to be residential. I don't think there's any serious support for commercial development. The question is, what kind of residential development is it going to support? And we've heard something about driveways and the driveway situation is, is, uh, there are two busy roads. And, uh, people speeding away from the light is one thing, but people also speeding down to catch the green light is something else when someone stops suddenly to turn in. So, traffic is an issue. Uh, we've heard from the historical commission, who really seem to have dug their heels into the, uh, into the granite and, uh, said, um, they want the building that's currently there to be saved. And, um, you say you have a thoughtful report from a engineer, a respected disinterested engineer, who has concluded that it can't be saved. If, in fact, you do, the board would like to see it. And if you don't, you probably should get one, because, um, uh, the idea of changing the zoning and destroying what has become a, uh, a fairly significant, um, point of preservation is, uh, they're, they're, they're sort of mutually contradictory. If you want to tear down the building, you probably should work with it in the current zone, because if what you're planning involves tearing down the building without showing that it can't be saved, uh, by a qualified disinterested engineer, I, I don't see that, uh, a zoning change would happen.
Let me just clarify one thing. We did receive a letter to, uh, Father Walsh, um, from a registered architect, who gave his opinion that the building was structurally unfound, but it's not from a registered structural engineer. So there is a difference in their professional capabilities, so.
Right, I didn't, I didn't get that letter.
No, I understand, I'm just letting Alex know.
Oh, I didn't get that letter either.
So. Um, so we would have to have a structural engineer rather than a registered architect. Their professional, uh, responsibilities are very different. So, um, Pete, I believe, are you done with your, I know Pete had a question, I want to interrupt you fully.
The, the, the final thing is, I was in downtown Boston, yes, Dan, I looked at the walls of the Filene's building. And, um, you know, where there's a will, there's usually a way. Um, and, uh, I hope that, uh, you, you know, the will is there.
Just one question. Usually goes with a heavy checkbook, too.
Nothing, okay, ready?
Tony, have you been in touch with the historic commissions? It's the commission, right, not the society? Is there a commission, correct?
Yes.
Twenty-five, the selectmen, okay. Have you people started to talk? My suggestion last time is if, uh, like, up in the Fletcher Steel Way, up in, uh, Highland Street, is it Highland Street? Yeah, the,
Alpha Highland, yeah.
The, the garden club eventually got involved now, and the developer gave up a lot to, to keep this garden in place. Fletcher Steel was a renowned, uh, landscape architect. And, um, have, have you started that dialogue?
Not on that particular issue.
Because how can he afford to?
I'd be more than one.
If we wanted to keep it, I think the community is going to try to, at least people that are interested in preserving the building are going to have to step up and.
I think having a dialogue would be an excellent.
Absolutely, yeah, I'll, I'll start it.
Anything else from board members? In that case, Anthony, why don't you step back, and we're going to let any other members of the public, and then you can come back and ask some more questions, but
Thank you.
let any other members of the public who wish to have a say? Anything, anybody? Yes? Come on forward, introduce yourself, let us know where you live.
Is there a speakers list anywhere?
No.
No, no, not, not listed at the moment.
Uh, my name is Kerry Choi. I live at twenty-three Wildwood, uh, which is behind the property that we are talking about. I've lived there for about thirty years. And, um, I want to speak on behalf of the neighborhood and, uh, make two particular points. The first is that we are very concerned about the possibility, uh, if this proposed development does not work, uh, that there will be, uh, significant pressure to have commercial development in that area. Uh, that commercial development would be ruinous to our neighborhood. Uh, I, I think that what makes Milton special is the fact that it is shoulder to shoulder against Boston, but has struggled over the years to maintain its rural feel and its suburban feel. Um, that's certainly why I moved to Milton over thirty years ago. I respect the economic concerns about the tax base, but in the long term, I don't think that we enhance our property values by chipping away at the special character of Milton. We in our neighborhood, I believe, and feel that we are at the cutting edge of a commercial wedge. It is extremely important for us to make it clear that we are adamantly against any commercial development in that area. We are allied by Father Walsh, who, um, has made it known to our neighborhood and our community that despite the additional revenue that may be available to the archdiocese, by getting behind a commercial drive, he, being a wonderful neighbor, has committed to try to stay commercial. Excuse me, residential. I am urging you on behalf of the proposed developers to, uh, try to be, uh, as flexible and accommodating as you possibly reasonably can. And I'm speaking on behalf of myself, and I believe I'm also speaking on behalf, uh, of the neighborhoods. Our concern is that if, uh, and, and I expect you will be, I just want to make it known how important this issue is. Uh, I was at that meeting that was mentioned with the neighbors. This develop, and I was at a prior meeting about a year ago, uh, with Father Walsh and the developers. Um, to the, to, to the extent that we as neighbors in the area uh, can, uh, can get a sense of a developer willing to, uh, uh, take a piece of property right next to us and do responsible accommodating design and put in, uh, buffer zones to listen to the neighborhood, um, we have that sense. So we are strongly in favor, uh, of this particular developer, and we urge the board to take into account our great fear that if it doesn't work out with this developer, uh, the next, uh, event could be another CVS-type battle. So, thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. I'm going to address some of those concerns in a minute, but I just want to make sure, is there anybody else who wishes to speak? All right, on the issue of commercial, I very deliberately brought up the idea of commercial development, both in my initial meetings with Mr. Rosido and with the church, and in the initial discussions that the planning board had, because I wanted to make sure that all possible uses had been considered. And I will say that so far, I haven't heard a single person, either at the board or, uh, in neighborhood coming up, that wanted that particular site to be commercial. So, as far as working with the current developer, my understanding, unless somebody on this board starts waving their hands at me now, is that we're all committed to keeping it residential. As Alex said earlier, what type of residential is another matter, but that particular parcel is being kept residential, so you don't have to worry about that. Now, let's assume the worst happens and this fails a town meeting. Um, what would happen then? Obviously, the underlying C zoning for residential remains in place, that does not change. Should somebody wish to change that parcel, to put something commercial on that parcel, they would have to go through that exact same process that Mr. Rosido and, um, St. Elizabeth's are going through now, which is they would have to come to the planning board, they would have to propose zoning, it would have to go through to town meeting. So, it's certainly not an automatic, this fails a town meeting and suddenly there's commercial there. It's the exact same process, and you and everybody else in town would have the right to come forward and speak against that process. So just to let you know, there is no automatic. I would, however, like to bring up something, um, uh, related to commercial, which is across the street, as you know, there's the Todeskis, there's the, um, building next to, that used to be a pharmacy, and then a couple of other things I think will now become residential. And there is an empty lot that used to be a gas station. Um, that empty lot, if it were ever to have anything put on it, would have to, is restricted to commercial because of the toxicity left over from the gas station being there. I would be awfully interested in anybody coming forward with creative ideas for that that might be acceptable to the neighborhood, that would be something other than an empty lot. That's just a personal statement, and I put it out there, but that can never be residential. So just keep your mind open on that. But this property, the one we're talking about now, right now, we're looking at residential zoning. Alex?
Uh, with respect to the empty lot on which there was a gas station, it, in fact, is residential.
I know it's unresidential.
And the only way, and the use, that, the gas station use is lapsed.
I understand that.
So the only way it could, uh, anything commercial could be done there would be with Board of Appeals, uh, permission.
Right.
And it would not be a special permit, it might have to be a variance.
I understand all of those things, but the reason I say.
And a variance, and a variance, that, you, almost.
Let me. Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
I was going to say, the reason I say it can only be commercial is because I understand that there is a state environmental order out there? I never remember the exact terminology of that one.
DEP has an administrative use limitation,
Yes.
AUL on that property.
Right.
Presently, there are two lots there. Uh, there were two houses on the Reedsdale roadside, but it is only two lots for the accessories.
But the AUL is solely on the parking lot, on the former gas station lot? It is not on both lots?
It would cost you ridiculous money to ever think that you're going to be able to put residences on that site.
So, that ends that, wait, 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 that ends that? I just wanted to let you know that that is out there as a possibility. I'd be interested to hear what people think at some point, but it does not relate to five ninety-seven, it's just a good opportunity to bring it up. Yes, sir?
I just have, I appreciate your response.
Come on, please.
I fully appreciate your response, and, and I take, uh, you know, heart in that. The other point that I'm making, and I just don't want it to get lost here, uh, because you make some good, strong points that I'm happy to hear, is the fact that when it comes to residential, uh, at least myself, uh, that the neighbors feel that this particular developer has been reaching out and been communicating effectively over the, over the last year, and has, has been very willing to meet, has been cooperative, and has kind of hung in there over the, you know, the bumps in the road thus far. So, uh, our preference would be, in addition to it remaining commercial,
Residential.
Excuse me, residential, that also, um, you know, speaking for myself, and I, and I, I hope some of the other members of our immediate neighborhood, um, we appreciate this particular developer.
Thank you so much, and I'm delighted to hear that he's been working with the neighborhood and that the neighborhood is pleased with that.
Can I, if I can preface something that we said on the two, uh, mill lots?
You can, although I sort of wanted it to just be a sidebar, kind of, you know.
The second lot is tied to the first one per a ZBA decision that, uh, every time they change the use in the building, they have to go back to the zoning board of appeals for a change of use.
Right.
So, the real estate office had to go for a change of use. Attached to the original permit for that is that empty lot to be used as parking.
Okay. Good to know. Thank you. For Slara. For floor five.
They have a use that ties it back to that building.
Anybody else on 597 ran off? Anthony, where are you? There you are. Send me an email, let's talk about coming back. Our next meeting is the 21st. We should probably be talking at that meeting and discussing what you're going to need for zoning, because we don't have very much time in which to write it to get it there for January. So, yes.
One thing about zoning is that when we, we really need some time to have people come in and talk about zoning drafts before we put the final one to bed. So, we really need to know what you want to do.
Yeah. And actually, Anthony, come forward. It's easier than shouting all the way down there. I know there's a mic, but I still feel like I'm shouting at you all the way down there. So, we talked about issues of your increase, your current plan, or at least the one we last saw, you wanted to increase density. So, we talked about issues of how you would get bonuses for that. Keith brought it up. I put in that email, which you should all have received at some point, some ideas for bonus, we're not...
Increased density from the six.
From the six, so, because you were looking for twelve. So, look at that. You need to be able to think about parking. You need to think, be able to think about how much coverage from the buildings on the site, how much coverage from parking on the site, issues of open space. So, these are all items that go into the zoning itself. So, if you could be prepared to discuss many of those on the 21st, that would be excellent.
Well, I'm going to try and meet with the neighbors again, because there's a couple of hurdles that, a couple of ideas from the neighbors that contradict some of the ideas from the board. So, I want to get that together so I can come up with a good plan.
Absolutely. And the more agreement you can get from the neighbors, the easier it is for us to sit there and work out any remaining details. Let me just check, oh, landscaping and buffering, and the general site layout, the where the curb cut is going to be. I think restricting it to one makes a lot of sense, but where that's going to be and which road is going to be very tricky. So, we need to talk about that. So, Eddie?
I just want to say, I think two curb cuts would make a lot more sense than one, because it just attested to a little while ago that one causes a frantic response because of the traffic coming up behind. If there was the option to go either way on Rizo off of 28, I think that we found, find out that that is much safer and more convenient and less hindrance to all concerned.
Well, the problem is connecting the two curb cuts within the site, because that completely reduced their ability to maneuver the buildings around the site by connecting them. So, that's why we looked at going down to one. But if you could start looking at traffic studies or the idea of getting some idea on the traffic there. So, I'm nodding about her, but I live in the area and I'm well aware of the traffic difficulties there. So, it's not the busiest road in Milton. It's, you've got among the two busiest roads in Milton on either side of that property.
Their intersection.
Their intersection, so. So, think about those things. If you have any questions?
Yeah, Jim?
Yes.
Maybe Alex can help with this. That's a state highway. It's very difficult to, they'll tell you what they want. Maybe that's the first...
That's why I was trying to avoid moving them. I was trying to come up with an idea to keep them, because it is tough to move them. But another idea I had that I am playing with is almost treating them as two separate projects and deadending them off of separate entrances.
It's an interesting idea. Having some options to look at would be good too, but I'm looking forward to seeing what you and the neighbors come up with. Anybody else on the board? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
All right, we're going to move on to 131 Elliot Street. Thank you to everybody who came in for 597. So, while we're setting up, oh, are you done?
We'll see.
Okay. Welcome.
Hello.
Okay, fair enough. Well, I'll ask, is everybody able to attend the select ones meeting next week?
No.
I have a call for the...
Okay, Alex, are you going to be able to be there?
On the 17th?
Seventeenth, yeah, we come today.
I don't know.
So, I don't know if you're the only one.
But I support this.
Okay. So, I could stand up and say, well, the rest of us are thinking about it, but Alex really supports it. Okay, that's two. Should we have a vote, so I can stand up and say?
It's the same thing I said.
Okay, everyone's...
I never know.
Okay, you ready?
Yes.
All right, so introduce yourselves.
Sorry. Steven Connolly, applicant, 131 Elliot Street.
And Warren Daniel, the architect, Daniel Architects. And we have two main items to go over tonight. The first being this rendering from Elliot Street, showing the houses, primarily the house on the right in the trees and our project on the left, the setback, landscape, et cetera. We tried, I guess you got the rough sketch of this a while back, but we desperately tried to get you this a few days ago, but the coloring is still, the ink is a little wet still. So, we just got it finished today. So, we can talk about the details of that, but it's basically, with a few small exceptions, the same design elements that we did before. I'll move over here. One change is that we went to a four over one window instead of two over two. We had shown the last two sketches, two over two, and, you know, thinking about alternates, and probably shows here the best. That felt more consistent rather with the neighborhood with square grids, but still with the bottom open, have a more, sort of open and slightly more modern look than a small grid would give you. And we've also lightened the color a little bit in this rendering from the other ones, trying to make it more, more sort of light earth tone rather than anything that begins to look more like a darker product. And then the other thing we brought is the point-by-point zoning issues we can go over. That was sent, I guess, to you yesterday. Maybe you've had a chance to look at it.
All right, any questions on the rendering so far? Yes, no, maybe, perhaps, okay. I believe you were also going to bring a landscape plan into us today.
We have the original landscape plan, which is here, which is essentially the same as what we're doing now. As you know, we moved the building back five feet roughly, and with the landscape here, and really throughout, I think there's a different treatment, as we've talked about on this side, with more landscaping and the bays coming down. But essentially, it is this, and as soon as we are ready to take the next step, which I think we are soon, you know, we can finish that off.
I was hoping we'd be able to take that particular step tonight as far as reviewing the landscaping with the new proposed building. So, I would certainly expect a full landscaping plan at our next meeting. So, barring any discussions and changes we make today.
We're happy to landscape for you, you know.
So... Well, barring, of course, any discussion that and changes we make today, I do expect that our next step will be the full landscape plan at the next meeting. So... All right, on to, if there's no questions on the renderings?
But on the landscape plan, the landscape plan isn't, I mean, the row of trees along the street, all of which are going to die because they're too close to the street, I don't particularly like, and that's the principal landscaping feature that you have. So, I'm hopeful, yes, I'm hopeful that you're going to, you're going to do some work on that landscaping plan, because as I say, if you don't, we can, we can landscape it for you.
I was thinking what we'd do is we'd go through the zoning, because I, and see where they match up to the zoning, because I suspect that there are certain questions, at least that I had, that will affect their overall landscape plan. So, I would like to go on record, however, saying the rendering is lovely. So, congratulations to the person who did that rendering for you. They did a beautiful job.
Peter, yeah, thank you.
Okay, so on this, you started off doing the point-by-point narrative on section 3J.
Yep.
For all of those who have their zoning at home and are wanting to follow along. Now, you start off with a purpose, which is fine. First item, allowable uses and base number of housing units. You have a blank A. Did you intend to have a blank A?
I don't think so.
Okay.
I think that obviously was a typo.
All right, just checking on that.
Yeah.
The residential units on the first, second, and third floors, that brings up a question that we had in the past when you had a floor plan showing one single residential unit next to all the commercial units. Is that still your plan?
On the first, I'm sorry, on the first floor?
Yes. If you look at 2B, you have, there are residential units on the first, second, and third and fourth floors.
Yeah.
Are you still planning on having that residential unit that was all by itself next to the commercial units as the only residential unit on the first floor?
We have, we have these ones too. So, we have, we have three residential units on the first floor.
If you go to the original submission...
Right, but we're not talking about the original submission anymore. We're talking about what you're doing now. Your original submission had a single residential unit next to the commercial units. That was the subject of some contention, because we only wanted commercial on the first floor. What is your current plan?
That was a revision.
Okay. So, what's your current plan?
What we are now is that we have the, we have three residential units on the original submission. You could refer to them as unit 101, 102, and 103. And the front section, the one that would be over, on the corner, over the commercial space, and the one on the Elliot Street elevation is all commercial.
Okay, good.
Which are 104 and 105 on the drawings.
So, that residential unit on the original submission that faces Elliot Street is no longer a residential unit? Excellent. Good move.
Right, so there's three residents.
All right. Anybody have any questions on number two?
I have a question as to, I mean, obviously, I haven't looked at this document. I haven't looked at the zoning, and I haven't looked at the plan. So, I hear what you're saying, but it doesn't necessarily mean that I'm going to support it.
Okay.
So, I'm simply saying that going through, going through the, going through these, assuming we get through and there are no specific issues raised, it doesn't mean that in the future, specific issues on all these points can't be raised.
So, my purpose tonight is to go through, if everybody is comfortable with that, and see if we can identify anything that strikes us right away, because as you say, we only received these yesterday. So, I'm assuming that the members haven't had a chance to do a detailed review against the zoning. I haven't. But I have noticed a few things that struck me immediately, and I'm assuming that other members have as well. So, I'd like to get those out of the way as quickly as possible. And then our next meeting, we will review the landscape plan, and we will do another run through of the zoning to make sure that we are all in agreement or potentially identify issues where we are not in agreement. But I want to make sure that we give them something besides the landscape plan to be working on for the next meeting. So, having said that, does anything else jump out in number two? All right, number three, bonus units for streetscape improvements. So, you are not requesting a bonus, is that correct?
Right, for unit count.
All right. Any questions on three? All right, use and dimensional requirements, number four. Now, some of these would be a lot easier to look at if we actually had the plans to go along with them.
Yeah.
Now that you've revised that. So, you know, we're going to, once we get the plans, we're going to have to check that everything matches. So, but in the first look, I think, I think for most of these numbers, it's going to be really tricky without the plans to spot things. That would be difficult. Same thing with lot coverage, building height. Now, we had discussed the average existing grade, I want to say about a year and a half ago. So, I'm assuming that that is consistent with our previous discussions.
Right, we haven't changed that.
Okay. Setbacks, this is 4E, the, yes.
Have you gotten to 4E yet?
4 what?
You said 4E?
Yes.
Okay.
Because we just whipped through 4A, B, C, and D.
We did.
Yes, because we don't have the plans to judge those dimensions on. But if you see something that strikes you, by all means...
4A said that the commercial area is forty-four percent of the primary floor area, and by zoning, it's required to be around 50 percent.
Ah, that was a number I didn't catch. Well done.
Well, that's true. That's where we're at right now.
Okay, so you're going to be working on getting the 50 percent done to meet the zoning?
Well, we're trying to find the balance between parking and the amount of commercial space. Now, I know that the way the board is interpreting or applying principal floor, and 50 percent of that principal floor is the overall footage.
Primary floor.
Primary floors, but we're, you know, if the board were satisfied with this amount of square footage, I believe there's a way that you could approve this amount of square footage if you apply the ratio differently.
My understanding is we came to an agreement about a year and a half ago, about the same time we did the average ground height as to how the commercial was going to be done. And we don't have the power to waive the 50 percent requirement that's in the zoning.
I'm not asking you to waive the 50 percent requirement. I'm asking you to apply the 50 percent requirement to the space that's dedicated towards the FAR, the building, because the FAR is a combination of residential and commercial space.
You're simply saying that parking on the principal floor shouldn't be included as part of the area.
I'm saying that the board could interpret it that way in order to make this conform to the zoning.
And we've discussed this.
Yes, we have.
And I say they could incorrectly so determine it, but...
They could incorrectly so determine?
They could so incorrectly determine it, but they were going to correctly determine it. So, I think that you'd better find one of those three units and turn it into offices.
My memory is that we had already come to an agreement on this, and I would expect that we would stick with the original agreement. I'll go back and look at my notes, but I remember extensive conversations about it.
Yeah, it's been...
But what it is, is a balance between what we can sustain on the lot with parking, because we're already deficient for spaces as it is. And we had talked about zip cars possibly making up the difference, things like that. So, every thousand square feet you turn over, you're adding two parking spaces, commercial space. So, it's not that we're adverse to it, just trying to fit on that side of what we can. We're trying to, we're trying to maintain a minimum unit count, residential count, and provide as much commercial space as we can.
On the parking, just to jump ahead, you do mention the zip cars. You also note that you're not going to know quite how much parking you need for business until you know who your tenants are going to be.
Well, we're going four per thousand.
I suggest you go back and have a look, and this is a personal suggestion. I'm happy for any member of the board to come in. I suggest that I would be more interested in you meeting the 50 percent zoning requirement, which you can't waive, we cannot waive, and let's look at being flexible on parking rather than the other way around. And I'd be happy for somebody to jump in and discuss that. I think with parking sharing, there's more likely we're going to be able to figure something out than we are on something that is stated in the zoning. I think with parking sharing, there's more likely we're going to be able to figure something out than we are on something that is stated in the zoning as being a requirement. Any, anybody want to jump in and contradict or? Yeah, we've got a long way to go on the parking because we haven't seen the other things yet for the fifty percent zoning requirement.
I think I think there's adequate use on the site for both the fifty percent commercial and the required parking.
Okay. But you would agree that they at least have to meet the fifty percent required commercial? Any any disagreement on the meeting the fifty percent required commercial? Okay, so meet the fifty cent percent commercial, see what you can do with the parking, hopefully you'll get there. And we'll continue that particular discussion later on. Anything else on four A?
Oh, well, we're we're going to make sure that you've got business use along the streets according to the zoning.
We just.
You're going to change around.
Right.
Yeah. We hit that.
Yes.
But we're going to reinforce that just a second.
We're just going to, we're going to make sure that.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, again, the square footages, we'll have to check once we have the plans.
Yeah.
Building height. Yes?
Why are we skipping around? The next one's floor area ratio. And the permitted floor area ratio is one point five. And they're all that.
Where did you get one point seven two five?
That's that's a zoning for protection of natural resources.
Ah.
When the tree came down, we were very clear that that eliminated the potential for that zoning, that bonus. So the floor area ratio has got, got to be one point five, which is fifty-three thousand square feet as opposed to fifty-nine thousand square feet.
Looking at page thirty-two, at least of my zoning bylaw, it says, buildings on a central avenue planned unit development exclusive of parking structures in areas used solely for parking shall not have a floor area ratio in excess of one and one-half times the area of the lot in the business district. It's one point five.
Right, so so this is the bonus number we have in here, which is fifteen percent additional.
But you just said you weren't going, okay, so you're not going for a bonus either for.
Not not on the basis of the the thirty-six.
Okay, so how are you justifying the bonus?
Yeah, we we should be clearer here in this in this note, we are asking for the bonus.
Okay.
Well, this is, we're asking for the bonus for square footage in the units and the amount of commercial space we're providing. We're not asking for a bonus for additional unit count.
All right, that's fine, but how are you justifying the bonus for the?
Well, that's where the landscape plan.
So we're going to need to see that landscape plan to decide whether or not it actually justifies it. Okay, now, on this, it also says that this is determinate, determined upon you preserving if feasible or replacing in kind one or more significant natural features on the site. So you're going to have to prove via this brand new landscape plan that you are replacing in kind since you're clearly not preserving. Okay, so so I think Pete and the others, that we will have to determine whether or not this does in fact replace in kind.
But it's the landscape plan, I mean, this, earlier we discussed how you should come in with landscape plan, but this makes it absolutely critical that you come in with a better landscape plan than what you've got now because what you've got now isn't going to, isn't going to convince anyone.
And I would certainly encourage you to use this as a working document and revise it and make it more clear precisely when you're asking for something.
Yeah, I'd like to be, get a little more specific on on what deficiencies it has in your mind.
The landscape plan?
Yeah, landscape plan, or do you want to wait until?
We can, I'll I'll give you one deficiency, at least in my mind, now, I'll give you the deficiency now because you're going to need to correct it, which is you've altered the building on the site, and the landscape plan does not reflect that.
No, I understand that.
Okay.
I'm talking really about the plant materials with having the basic layout of the landscape.
Let's get to that after we go through the rest of this because there's some other elements in here that are going to answer part of that question. Okay, so lot coverage, which I see in the zoning, shall not cover in excess of fifty percent of the lot of the business district. And that is buildings exclusive of parking structures used solely for parking, and you are saying that the lot coverage is forty-seven percent?
Mm-hmm, right.
Any questions or comments?
You can check that.
All right. Building height, now, we just have to make sure that this agrees with our discussion originally as to how we were going to calculate the building height. Any other comments on building height? Setbacks, we've been talking a lot with your renderings about setbacks. Does anybody have any further comments or questions on setbacks? This is setbacks of the third and fourth floor, and you have said that you have broken up the massing with the element, different building element heights, the bays, the balconies, the decks, the corner cemented floors, the siding materials. Anything else that anybody has a concern about in this particular area?
Well, you were calling for a waiver in certain areas, so you're going to have to, and we'll discuss that. Well, I mean, since you are asking for a waiver of something that's required, we're going to have to look at what you propose and the reason why you don't you don't meet meet what the zoning requires.
This, just just to reiterate from last time, these balconies are a device as well as a useful element to setback, create setbacks along the lane of the building.
On the tracks.
On the tracks.
But on Elliott Street and on Central Avenue, you've got you've got those issues.
It, yeah, I mean, that can occur here too. The same thing can occur here too. I tend to not like it as much as I like this, I guess, the look of it, but if you feel very strongly that that's important.
Well, you're going to convince us that what you've designed, which doesn't comply with the zoning without a waiver, should receive a waiver. That's what you're going to do, because you're the architect.
Right.
And as you work on this working document, in addition to identifying where you are requesting a bonus, it would also be helpful if you specifically identify what you are requesting to be waived and why.
Okay.
On the on the upper story setback, I think that the the building height along Central Avenue for being that close to the street really demands an upper story setback, that's my feeling, and we'll have this discussion, but I really think that since there's an exposed level, it's ground level, it's not the first floor, but it's it's a building height there that matches, just the the ground floor matches the buildings around the area. I think perhaps one up and then a setback. According to the zoning, conceivably it could go to up, but I think Central Avenue really demands a setback. On Elliott Street, the section one that you were pointing to, in my feeling, that doesn't demand a setback because it's so far setback from the street already.
Yeah.
So I think that works, but there's the commercial section on Elliott Street that's that's close there. I think I think we have to look more closely at that, I don't know one way or another what I think about that yet, because it is set setback a little bit further than on Central Avenue already. So I think studying that a little more to see if it is one setback, but I think.
Is that, excuse me for a second, the commercial section on Elliott Street?
Right, the one that's, the three-story sections or this piece? That's that's close to the street?
Right.
I don't know, I don't have an opinion on that yet, I'm looking at it.
Yeah, I mean, it's three stories.
But I think I think Central Avenue really needs a setback.
And and Pete, you're taking into account as you look at that, the fact that they've already moved the building further back on Central than they already have? I'm just making sure, okay. So, for people watching at home, okay. Any other questions or comments on setbacks area? Okay, on to five, design standards. So, building does have no blank walls.
Hopefully.
We've we've all agreed to that. You say that you've broken up the building massing, and we're still talking about the setbacks, but, okay. Building walls do not present flat unreleaved, any questions on that? Questions on five D, but rather whether or not it's a box-shaped structure without visual interest? Okay, five E is the varied design of the building facade.
One one question on five B.
Five B?
It does, yeah, I mean, this is where the waiver, the planning board may in its discretion grant exceptional modification to the setback height requirement in this paragraph fin- finding that a greater uninterrupted rise is architecturally appropriate that does not cause unacceptable appearance of bulk in the building. So I I mean, look at that particular item because you're going to have to satisfy that.
Okay.
All right. Windows and doors is F and G. Facades with architectural elements is A, I is a roof line. That reminds me, Bill, had you sent out that item from John Ziegowitz to everybody? Did they all get a copy of that?
I sent it out electronically.
Okay. Did you, you also?
We did get it, yeah.
Okay, and did you have, just, where's my copies?
Just to explain to to Pete, it's putting a peak on the top of the tower.
Yeah, the corner.
Ready? We'd be interested in, yes.
I suggested that the peak probably makes the building too tall.
Difficulties.
Well, except that's on the three-story section, not the four-story section.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm not sure, because that's kind of antithetical to a mansory, I mean, peak on it like that.
Well, you know, traditional ones did have a low pitch.
Very low.
I, yeah, I mean, I would, looking at that rendering, want to see if we were to do that, want to see it flatter than that.
Okay.
It kind of seems, um.
I think the the idea was just on the corner element to give it a little bit of prominence.
Yeah, and separate it more.
I I certainly agree with the idea of giving it more prominence, so if you could think about how that.
More traditional mansory peak.
Yeah, flatter might make.
The change is that, it doesn't make it look like thirty-six Central, which is in the background of that building. It actually makes it look a lot different.
We do want the buildings to have their own identities, as I'm sure you do as well.
It makes it look more different than thirty-six, from, different from thirty-six.
Wooden ornate letter vein there, maybe perhaps a couple more to up here.
We can also talk about other elements, so, such as a letter vein. Let's see, five J is the exterior siding materials, you proposed some colors, and obviously one of the very last things we'll do is discuss the color changes.
I think under both E and J, I think you're still talking about masonry, that's what masonry, that's all, that's still.
I agree.
I mean, this, all these things are going to depend on the design that they bring in. I mean, we don't know what the doors, how they're going to work. I mean, we've gotten, I like your window idea, down around, when we take a look at it, it's going to.
Yeah, and again, just to qualify, this is the first time we're looking at this document as a board, it's the first time we've seen the rendering as a board, so we will have more questions
Right.
for the specifics, but this is just to identify a few outstanding, large items that we want you to address. Consistent side height, sign height in K. I think judging from things that we've all said in the past, that we still really need to work on the parking, both the indoor and the exterior parking, and your landscape plan slash site plan should show us more details for us to discuss at that next meeting.
And I think traffic, traffic planning too.
Traffic plan, that's right, thank you.
Should be ready for the next meeting.
Okay, good, that will be extremely helpful.
Right.
Anything else on parking at this point? All right, M is the interior of the units, talking about sound isolation, not only from each other but for the tracks. So, and discussion of energy efficient windows. Interior finishes, so we may want to add some more to that later on, but, I don't know, anybody have anything on interior finishes so far? Okay. Landscaping, so, this is O, P, and Q. You know, obviously, we're going to see, want to see the plant materials, we're going to want to see, as we've already discussed, how you're justifying the bonus request. I think we're going to, at least from my perspective, I want to know how the public will be encouraged to have access to the site, and if you're proposing that any part of the site is in fact off limits to the public, where and why. Any other questions on the landscaping or points to bring forward?
Just a couple of comments on the rendering that we saw there of the Elliott Street edge. I think that the picket fence and the granite entrance and all that really speaks to private. And I think it's, you know, we talked before about that's of a focus base in there. I really think, I I continue to think that that the function of this part of the commercial area to have an outdoor, comfortable outdoor gathering space with benches and tables and gardens and, you know, a place that people can come and share coffee and meat and things like that. It's not going to happen on the corner where it did before. I think this area along Elliott Street, we should be looking toward creating a comfortable outdoor garden that's, you know, publicly available. So I do worry that the notion of a picket fence there seems to privatize the space.
Okay. Anybody else with comments on that? I think that's something that you really need to look at is how to make this welcoming.
Yeah, we certainly have to discuss that with with Bill Fleming and go through the whole thing. I think our intention with the fence was to either do it with landscaping or with the fence, the fence seemed a little more formal and maybe defined than landscaping, some kind of a low hedge or something would be, but I think want to create some kind of an edge for the property.
A nice boxwood hedge.
Yeah, and you could still perforate it with openings into it so it isn't, you know, unbroken.
I don't have a problem with a defined edge as long as the defined edge isn't being seen as unwelcoming. So I think that's the challenge, is how do you define the edge without it saying keep out? And I think Pete's absolutely right on this point. The type, the type of public space and the quality of the public space is very key at this point, especially if you're looking at bonus requests.
So so I can understand a little better and also talk to Bill Fleming about it. I I want a little, plan a little discussion about the row of Elms in front because I think that's a major element of this design, and if there's consensus that those will be vulnerable in those locations. To me, they seem setback enough, but I I'm not a landscape architect and, you know, I I need to really get with with Bill and understand that better.
Okay.
Yeah.
Pete, how are Elms doing as street trees?
Oh, they're fine.
Okay.
Your heritage Elms.
I thought there was a new space.
But I can't tell from the plan that we saw how far those are setback from the sidewalk. I would say a minimum of eight feet from the sidewalk.
I think they're ten feet or so.
Yeah. It's hard to tell.
Yeah, we, you know, we'll have to nail that.
Or how wide that sidewalk is there too.
Yeah, I think that's four feet. So, and the edge of that would be four or five.
Yeah, I I think the goal, I would have ten feet, ten feet setback.
Alex and Bernie both had questions, so.
My question is, I hear what you're saying. I want to know how these things are going to be planted. In other words, what you're doing is seeking to create a hundred-year tree, so it needs plenty of room for the root structure. And if you've got a two-foot-wide planting space, it's it's fine, if your trees are far enough from the street so that they're not going to get killed with salt, that they're not going to get trampled down as part of the, the root structure is not going to get trampled because of pedestrian traffic and because there's plenty of room for the trees to grow, then then I could go with that, but I I need to know that. Because it's all too easy to throw a tree in which is gone.
Right, obviously, it's got to be done properly and with the right setbacks. Right, obviously, it's got to be done properly and with the right setbacks and the right root conditions, okay.
Bernie, any questions?
Yeah, the, uh, the Adams Mansions on Adams Street and Quincy, the, the two presidents, uh, they use boxwood inside. They have like a brick wall outside, which is, which is pretty nice. I mean, maybe we consider here and have some gates that people can, they're always open. And, uh, and they have various plants, roses and so forth, you should just take a walk and see how that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I haven't been there.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's quite nice.
And the linking of the paths too would make a difference, you know, how do you get from the, can, is it possible to go from the commercial area right on the corner directly into the landscape area and how do you encourage people to do that? So think about the, the interior paths as well, so. Anything else on the landscaping for now? Yes, Eddie?
The, uh, the landscape here is for public, uh, use. I just have a problem with that. With the old Henry's Building, it was out front. And couldn't really bother any residential quarters if it were out there. But now we're moving to the site, into the neighborhood. Are we going to have restrictions on the use times and so forth? Is it designed for children, is it designed for adults? Young adults can, could pose a problem, in my opinion. If you have your bedroom, uh, two, two stories up, you may not want to listen to people out there at nine o'clock at night. So I just wonder what restrictions may be needed, and I, I put up, that up there now, because I think it's a problem in the making.
I think it's a very good concern, we'll, we'll definitely have to keep talking about that one, I think.
Thank you.
Just getting back quickly to the edge of Elliot Street. I don't have any problem in terms of creating an edge. The picket fence, I think, is preferable to a hedge itself. But I think the design so that it is obviously public space, that to the public as well, and then there's a place, you know, for them to meet and gather, that's the key. But in terms of an edge, I, I think rather than a strong hedge, I think I like the concept of, of that sort of stuff.
Okay.
Um, a note on the pergola, I would just be very careful of the design of the pergola. Um, pergolas haven't had a great history in, uh, in Milton as far as.
Oh, really?
Uh, well, we had all those ones at East Milton Square that, uh, disappeared at some point because people really, really hated them, so. Um, on the parking deck, the park over the parking deck, so, and, you know, it brings up maintenance issues and things like that, so just, um, think about other possibilities. So, I'm not saying I wouldn't go for a pergola, I'm just saying I'm, I'm not entirely convinced by it.
What was, uh, what was their basic problem, do you think?
Uh, the design wasn't felt to be in keeping with the area, and I think that's a definite consideration on the pergola. Is, you know, you look at the building that you've designed and want to make sure that any structure, I appreciate the idea of having something that marks the residential entrance. I think that's an excellent idea, just sort of consider all the possibilities and carefully consider the design and maintenance of that. So, anything else, landscape? Alright, then, the affordable housing units, um, ten percent or four units total. And we'll of course have to consider how those become managed, uh, and so forth, and so, we had some practice with writing that for thirty six Central. Uh, now, business parking, uh, actually, let's just do business parking, residence parking and parking for off-site unit. Let's just talk parking in general. So, obviously, we want you to either meet the requirements or come as close as you can and explain why you're, why you're going for some sort of variance. Um, take a look at the parking sharing tables that have been done for other special permits that might help you in your thinking. Anybody have any, and oh, and we still need to talk about the balance of interior and exterior parking.
Right.
Um, that's come up before, I don't think it's an issue that's yet been solved. Um, anything else on parking?
I'm concerned that the, the parking spaces that are identified as the business spaces are so remote from the business uses.
Okay.
That to park way down there and then have to go out of the site and down the sidewalk and into the commercial spaces. You know, if it's raining or whatever, or you're carrying stuff, then you've got to come out onto the public sidewalk again, and I, I just, I don't think that's a very good location for business parking.
Okay.
Given where the location of businesses are.
Um, so, have a thought about that and how you might address that? Is there, is there a way of getting people from the parking to the businesses in, in a more comfortable manner?
Well, we, yeah, it's, I think, I feel like it's, uh, the best we can come up with and that the businesses want to be and really have to be on Central. And there isn't room unless we obviously put the parking in here, which would kind of ruin the, uh, the meaning of this landscape rather than down here. So we have, uh, you know, roughly a block to, between the parking, but it seems like in a setting like this, that's an extreme amount.
I don't necessarily think that the distance is a problem, but the idea of, uh, the, I mean, if you're parking, uh, if you're going to, uh, park once in a, a more urban environment, you certainly would walk more than a block from a car, but people are in a suburban environment, so they're thinking about that. And, uh, it would be interesting to know if there's a way in your plan that you can provide for some sort of covered access. Um, just have a look at it, it may or may not be possible, but it's worth looking at. I will say that I personally find the idea of the zip cars intriguing, so I don't know if the other members of the board feel the same way, but the fact that you're right next to the transit stop and I can see people taking the red line out to go to the Blue Hills or something, and maybe they don't have bikes or don't want to bring their bikes along and picking up a zip car. I think that's kind of intriguing personally.
Yeah.
The other members obviously have different ideas on that, but, um.
How does that, how does that, doesn't that just require more parking than we've already, uh, required?
Well, not necessarily, because it may be that the people in residences then don't need their own cars, or some of them may not choose to have their own cars. They may just use the zip cars as, um, theirs. I, I know quite a few people who live near transit stops that use zip cars or have talked to people, and there aren't that many zip car locations in this particular area. So as I said, I find it intriguing and would be willing to discuss.
Yeah, or they could have one car and, and use a zip as their second car.
Exactly, so.
But the zoning does say one space per bedroom.
Right.
And so it does.
I'm just simply saying, even if one of those cars is a zip car.
It's still one space per bedroom, yes.
But I, I, I mean, how we, uh, how we, uh, say that pulling a zip car into a particular unit's designated parking. Because we have heard that people who buy units like to hold their parking space as well.
We have done, that will require some intriguing and challenging thinking on part of all of us. It's a good question.
I think the, the last thing at this point that I want to say about the parking is we've got this whole issue of the fourteen replacement spaces that, you know, the town went under the building and, and when we took this, the plan that was taken to the town meeting for the zoning approval, showed fourteen spaces, uh, replacing those spaces, that was always part of the discussion. And those spaces would disappear, so I.
There are now twelve as opposed to fourteen. So it's parking for off-site use is under nine.
Um, we get to nine, we can talk about it, but I don't, I, I don't think that the plan meets the parking requirement of the building itself to say nothing about the replacement spaces.
Uh, I see what you're saying.
So I think that's, you know, still an open question.
That's why I'm looking, yes.
Yeah, that does not apply.
That is not the fourteen spaces?
No, number nine does not apply, no.
No, the.
There are not twelve spaces.
Right.
The totals are right.
Right, no, number nine is up, number nine is up.
Well, that would explain the confusion.
Yeah, the totals are right above and the sentence is right on, on residential parking.
Okay. It's, it's not that we are eliminating parking space. We are providing as many parking spaces as we feel is aesthetically appropriate on that site. Now, we can add more parking space, but you're going to cut down on the green space.
I'm looking forward to this discussion, once we have a landscape plan.
Imagine, on the affordable units, have you talked about, if there's four affordable units, would they be two two bedrooms and two one bedrooms? Or have you talked about it all?
The distribution of them?
We haven't discussed that yet.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, I don't know.
I'm looking at the price of them, and I've, I'll trend towards one bedrooms if we can. Because there's, I think the sale price on them, one hundred forty or one hundred fifty thousand. So you're, they're being built out, they're a net loss on each unit, so I'd rather keep it to one bedrooms rather than two, if we can't.
I was going to say, you may have to check, yeah, there are some regulations.
I think you have to do a similar distribution to the rest of the units.
Yes, exactly, so if you have three to two or something like that, then the affordable has to be three to two or whatever, so.
But this is, uh, on thirty six Central Avenue, they provided two one bedroom units. And this is, uh, after all, they zoning, a matter of zoning rather than a state program. I mean, the state isn't providing anything other than, uh, the count, uh, so I, I'm.
Is thirty six, are the two affordables one bedrooms?
Yes.
One bedroom, one.
One bedroom with a den, so it could be two if they wanted to change the den to a bedroom.
And add a parking space. Whatever, joke, a little joke.
Alright, so, site plan, obviously, we'll be bringing to that, um.
Is there a closet in that den?
We can make it, they build a closet.
No, window in it, I hope.
I'll give you ventilation.
Okay. Any, any further items that you want to let? Any further questions for us? And then I'm going to open it up to public comment, because this is after all, public hearing. So, okay, you want to hold off for the, alright, so I'm going to, anything else on board before I open up for public comment? Alright, you two want to step down, we'll open it up for public comment and then you can come back and we'll talk next steps.
Welcome. Margaret Donovan, forty one Central Avenue, and for all two members who are viewing public, um, I'm just stating that I'm here as an abutter to this property as I was in the, in about it to thirty six Central Avenue. So I'm not here as a groupie, Mr. Lynch, I'm here because of legitimate.
Can I be used as that expression?
I hope not. Uh, I do commend, uh, Mr. Conley and the architect for coming up with a design that's far more architecturally interesting than the Stetson Shoe Factory that we saw, um, a few months ago. I did mention at the last meeting, and I know you're a long way from the outside colors and so on. I would like to see the brick going all around, to the front at least, not just that small piece, but around, similar to thirty six Central Avenue. Thirty six Central Avenue was always a very, and is, a very interesting architectural bu- building. The complaint from the neighbors was that it was too large for the lot. Um, but in terms of the building itself, it's beautiful. And so, I'd like to see something that sort of mir- mirrors that here at one thirty one Elliot Street. My concern is the, the track, the tracks. Very, very nice with all those outside balconies along the tracks. Who's going to buy apartments or, or units, condominium units, that have balconies overlooking the track? I mean, at least down on eighty eight Wall, they have built right up to the track, but they don't have balconies there. Balconies do add intellectual, architectural, um, interest. However, um, my concern is that this is going to turn into low income housing. Um, when I asked Mister, Mister Conley, what was the price range, he said, oh, it's thirty six Central. So, you mean five eighty-five down to three seventy-nine? No, 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 three thirty-one. Be like if he gets two twenty-nine for these units right there on the track. Who's going to buy, who's going to buy there? It would be grand if instead they did what they did down at eighty eight Wall, which is to just have the plain windows on the track. It'd be nice if this were built like a quadrangle, so that the people could have their balconies overlooking a garden in the middle. It would also be attractive if they had fewer units, but more expensive ones, so that there would be a profit for Mister Conley. Um, but right now, I don't see it. It would be almost better if then, um, Cracker Factory went back there and, uh, and was built as a, as a factory or as a, uh, commercial building than to have low income housing, which is going to attract, um, people.
I don't think that, I, I, I'm not sure that we should be discussing this.
Yeah, I, I agree, um, Margaret, the, the developer has to make a profit. I'm sure these are required to be owner occupied condominiums or potentially owner rental condominiums, but they're condominiums, not rentals. I, I, I think you're veering off subject. I understand that you don't like the way that the building is, is designed at this point. Um, and I understand your concern about the balconies, but, you know, the, uh, al- the information that he gave us today said that things will be soundproofed. The walls will be soundproofed. People always have the option of opening or closing their balcony doors, so, you know, the trains don't run every five minutes. I think, you know, it's up to the developer what he thinks he can build and sell. As far as that's concerned, it's up to us to make sure that it's in the public interest and it's as attractive and meets the, uh, public requirements. But I don't think we need to be speculating about who is going to be buying, just please state your concerns.
Excuse me, I, but I think that you should project, um, as to who would be buying. And that's, I'm just raising issues and ideas and concerns. And in terms of rental, yes, if he can't sell the condominiums as condominium ownership, uh, that.
These are required to be sold as condominiums, that's what the special permit will state, that's what the zoning states, there's no question of rental here.
But if he can't sell them, he can certainly rent them. And that, there's nothing that would stop him from being a, from renting his own units. But, and I look across at River Street where the, the schoolhouse, they tried to sell those as condominiums and they were not able to do that. That's just around the corner on River Street, and they're rental, and that's fine. Um, but I think that you have, you know, you, you have to project into the future as to what is going to happen on that spot.
Do you have any other, uh, concerns or questions for the board on this?
On, on that?
No, on any other, not on that, but any other questions or concerns for the board.
I have concerns about the parking.
Okay.
Because it's a commercial district and I don't know that people understand that they can park in the, uh, in the parking area.
Okay.
Um, I think that they believe that it would only apply, be, be available to those who live or own the commercial units. And so I see that Elliot Street and Central Avenue is going to be inundated again with cars. And hopefully, hopefully, the one hour parking will be enforced so that it no longer remains an MBTA parking lot. In terms of the, the trees, uh, that whole area coming across from my house and going across this, through, uh, the house behind me and across the street and over into the lot is ledge, ledge. And so, those trees are not kind of large trees. They were lucky you had that one tree, but which they, I fully appreciate why Mister Conley had to take that tree down. But the tree on, on, um, Central and, and Maple fell down, almost hit a car parked right there. Um, and so, he did the right thing in taking down that tree, but to think about putting up a number of trees there, they're, they're, they're going to die and it's not going to be from, from the salt, it's going to be from, there's no place for the roots to grow, so. But I do think that I have raised some concerns that this planning board should be considering.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
We appreciate your comments.
Anybody else want to speak on this?
Yes, sir.
Yep, please come forward. Name an address for the record.
Yes, uh, my name is Paul Sullivan, uh, twenty one Smith Road. Uh, I just want to commend the developer, Mister Conley, and his architect Warren. I think they've, uh, they did a lot of work on this building, and I think it's really improved dramatically and, and I think it's, it fits really well, fits in the. and I think it's, it looks really well, fits in the neighborhood. And I just had one quick question, I just wondered where the clock tower is? Is it on the one for this?
Not one currently proposed, but we can consider, continue to discuss it. Did you want a clock tower?
Uh, we.
Was that on your list of?
That was an important feature I thought might be, uh, appropriate for the building.
Couldn't you put one in your building?
I think it's a little late.
Yeah, unfortunately it didn't work out, but, uh, I, I, I think it's a great building, I think it looks great.
Okay, thank you very much. Anybody else want to come forward? Stephen Moore, why don't you come back and we'll talk next steps? So our next meeting is November twenty-first, which is a Monday, so it's only a week and a half away. Um, and actually it'd be a good time to just start discussing the rest of our meetings for the year. Uh, what's your schedule looking like as far as getting things to us?
All right, that's pretty kind of, a little difficult after.
What would be the following one after that?
Well, we've been going for December eighth, but I understand there's a, a conflict with, uh, an important retirement party, you know? Um, what, what is the board's availability? As far as meetings go, are we flexible with meeting to the? Yeah, I know, I don't want to.
Next year?
No, no, no. We have a few more meetings we have to have before the holidays, sorry. So Ed, you've got a calendar there, what's, uh, what else I forgot?
The week of the twenty-eighth, uh, we, we want the week of the twenty-first on the Monday.
We got the twenty-first on Monday, yep.
The week of the twenty-eighth.
So that would be December.
Who, who'd be it?
It's the first Thursday in December.
December one Thursday.
December one?
What's wrong with the fifty-eight?
Um, there's a retirement party for a town employee that Ed would like to attend, so we're just going to look and see if there are a few other dates. We also have to keep in mind that if we're taking zoning to town meeting and we haven't talked a lot about it, we need to, uh, start cracking on that. Would you be able to make December first?
Yes.
I think so, yeah.
Okay, is everybody else able to make December first? So it'll put us in conflict with the selectmen for going live, but, uh, I think we need to, uh, do that. You all can do it. All right, so the next meeting will be December first. We'll see you at six forty P M, once we don't have anybody else for that. And after that, we'll talk about the other meetings after that, so.
Now, for this next meeting, would we get to traffic or would be, that be the following?
No, I would go ahead and bring the traffic and the landscape plan in.
Do you want the traffic engineer here?
I think that's a good idea.
At that point, because honestly you can get him up and talk.
If you can get us the, uh, traffic study first.
Yeah, for, for having him here, I'd like to.
Because there's no point in not being able to ask him questions because we have an updated stuff.
Right.
So we'll see how, when I get it now, if I'm in a second get it to you, okay.
Um, I'd also update the document with the zoning. Again, let's look at that as a working document, so clarify the questions that we came up with, that'd be great. Uh, Ed, nice job, by the way, getting that to us, so that was very helpful to be able to start going through that.
Yeah, it was a little last minute, but we got it, a little bit.
So we'll be looking for the landscape plan, full landscape plan, traffic study at least. And if you can get the traffic study to us in time, the traffic engineer, absolutely. The updated, uh, how you meet zoning requirements. And then, um, I think the next step after that, so you might start thinking about that, is going to be the actual site plan as opposed to landscape plan and also the plans for the building.
Right.
So, um, in fact, if you look at the, since we started the process and then we sort of stopped it and restarted it as it were, um, you should look at what's required for the actual application and start pulling those documents together in their final form. So obviously, anything that has an outstanding question.
We'll have to meet.
We'll, we'll have to solve those questions before you can do that, but I'd start looking at it, your checklist, yes. I see whispering, but.
Coming up with times, um, we need to have a second meeting in December.
We're going to, we just don't want to start that date discussion yet because I have a couple of things on the annual town meeting that I want to bring forward as we discuss dates. But yes, I agree, did you have a date in mind already?
Twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fifth.
I don't think we'll have to do those.
I'd like to get.
What?
We, we have, um, Milton Marketplace.
Oh, yes.
Coming in for the second story addition, but they have to go to zoning board appeals first.
Okay, do you know?
They're due to go to zoning board appeals. Initially, they'll be there on the fourteenth, there'll be a continuation for another meeting. And we don't know when that is. We expect that sometime in the week of the last one on November first, one in December.
Okay. So are you suggesting that we might have to meet the first and the eighth potentially?
For the fifteenth.
Is there a time pressure on that, that you can't go to any of them?
Uh, they messed up in their filing. They filed for two additions on the first floor with the zoning board appeals.
Can I stop you right there and can we finish off with them and then we can discuss it? Okay, do you have any questions for us before we let you go?
I don't think so.
Okay, okay.
Can we get the, the materials?
Yeah.
I, I need them when we edit that. They're all looking at no plans because we don't have, uh, we changed the design of the building and we're using the old plan to try to look at, so. Well, I think we're at a point where we can comfortably move forward with that. The, the numbers are similar, which is why we're trying to work with actual engineering numbers and we can put it on that. Right, you're using the same numbers that were in the original. Right, which are, you know, which are accurate, so for the discussion purposes, they're good to work with. We're getting to the point now.
Let's start getting actuals, yes.
There's enough little changes that we got to put them all together in a plan though. Site plan, you know, bring it all together, I understand.
Yeah, yeah, getting, getting them in advance would be good and also can we get PDFs of the renderings? I'm sure the media will be requesting them and it'd be nice to have them for our own reference.
Uh, yeah, you have the other ones already, so just this one, I'll get you this one.
Great, that'd be excellent, so. But yeah, let's, uh, let's move forward and get some actual numbers and actual plans and we'll see you on the first.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, let's finish discussing about Milton Marketplace and scheduling and then let's quickly touch on the annual town meeting because we need to start doing some real work on those. For the news, as we, as far as our schedule is concerned, is we now do not have an article for the special town meeting. However, I suspect that we will need to have a vote for the special town meeting on the community preservation act. So if you haven't had a chance to review those documents, um, please do so and I am sure we'll be getting an article at some point. I mean, it's not required, but somebody may well ask as the planning board, but our opinion is.
No.
Fruit Center.
They're coming in for a site plan approval for a second story addition.
Okay.
We have a commissary, um, it's on the second floor, pushed back off of the building itself. Uh, we have the plan, okay, so we haven't scheduled them with you until after the zoning board appeals.
Right.
And I don't have a date for that, zoning board appeals until Monday.
Okay, the other thing is Full T Homes would like to come in and see us. They can't make December eighth, um, and I need to get to Kevin Mur, a list of our other meetings in December, so it'd be helpful if we could hammer those out tonight, so I can have them out.
We have Ned coming supposedly on the eighth too, so.
Right, so, uh, we'll have to either.
He can come on the first.
He can definitely come on the first.
Will he be happy to come on the first?
Yeah. Which reminds me, the reason Ned is coming in, just so we all know, is that in addition to looking at the, um, assisted living zoning bylaw change and adi- and in addition to the ones that the building commissioner has requested and in addition to five ninety-seven Randolph Avenue, um, Ned Corcoran, uh, spoke to me the other, called me the other day, um, and he would like to propose language for a change to the home occupation bylaw. Um, and you should have that in your packages. Uh, it's not for discussion tonight, but I wanted to make sure you got it in your package so you have a chance to read it. Should be one page, says Town of Milton Planning Board at the top. Looks like this, but without the blue writing. Should be in tonight's package, probably, that we received tonight. So, if not, maybe Bill, you could email it out if you haven't already done so. Uh, so any rate, this is for you to read between now and our next meeting, um, so we can discuss it with Ned then. And on the assisted living, we need to start figuring out how we're going to.
Ned is going to bring in some language on that also.
Yeah, that's what I thought he said, was that, uh, he was.
And Mr. Sheffield may also bring in some language, so we'll have, we'll have language along for the place.
Speak all kinds of languages.
Okay, and then if you could all review for our next meeting on the twenty-first, if you could all review the, um, uh, request from the building commissioner, I'd like to get a decision as, now, on the twenty-first as to whether or not we're going to go forward and we haven't really discussed it in a while. So if you remember, it was.
Parking on streets?
It was the parking on streets and the need to add accessory equipment such as air conditioning, condensers, pool pumps and heaters and other.
Generators.
Similar, exactly, other similar equipment to the definition of accessory structure. So those are the two items and I'd like to get a decision on the twenty-first as to whether or not we're going to take those forward to the annual town meeting so we can get stuff, um, get the appropriate language ready to go.
The twenty-first is what day?
It is Monday, it is the Monday before Thanksgiving. Since I'm assuming we'd all rather be eating turkey than, uh, meeting at the planning board. Anything else?
The first and the fifteenth.
Sorry?
First and the fifteenth in December.
Is everybody happy about the first and the fifteenth, does that work?
Sure.
Do we think two meetings in December is going to be enough?
Yes.
I was hoping to do. Yeah, I was hoping to do one.
I'm afraid we're gonna need at least two, so.
One's up Hattie.
Well, it would have to be the, uh.
After, after the twenty-first, we just said.
Well, it's after the twenty-first for, uh.
Want to wait till the twenty-second in December?
Or do you want to do the fifteenth and the twenty-second?
Let's do the fifteenth and not the twenty-second.
Why don't we do the fifteenth and, uh.
First and fifteenth.
I have a conflict with the fifteenth.
No, well, you can't have two conflicts. I say we do, let's do, let's do the first and the fifteen and then if on the first we decide that we're going to have to third meet a, we'll have to have a third meeting in December, we can decide then whether it's going to be the eighth or the twenty-second. But let's hold the first and the fifteenth.
Is it going to be in this room or upstairs?
I don't know, that's a good question. It may depend on what's available.
It's, it's very difficult for MPAC to set this up.
It's going to be upstairs.
Good, because.
Zoning, the zoning's for the annual town meeting.
What day, first?
We need to get the zoning for the annual town meeting ready for January.
We can do it in the, uh, well, I mean, if there's a selectance meeting, it's going to be on tape.
I know what day.
First of December or the fifteenth of December, we're up against the selectmen.
Yeah, he'll be down here.
Yeah.
But you, as long as it's not live, it's okay, down here?
If it's live, it'll be down here, but it's not my preference down here because.
On the equipment.
We know it's not, we, we understand that, but.
We could, we could do the council on age, you know, if that makes, that's equal for us.
But equipment pointed people, we'll try not to make your life too difficult, but.
Same building would be great.
We'll do the same building at least, so, so hold the first and the fifteenth, yes, Ed?
Couple of things.
Yes.
Um, the reason we're not meeting, we can't meet on the eighth is because Giannis Freeman in the building department, he's been there about thirty years, extraordinary town employee. We're going to honor him on the eighth at the Common Market and Diane can provide any information. Correct, Diane? More information if anybody wants it.
Sure.
The other thing is, uh, I stole part of this from the Milton Times, the other part I knew, but your two birthdays are significant today.
Today?
Dan Hacker with the library.
Oh.
And, uh, venerable, uh, George, um.
Thompson.
George Heard, George Heard.
Oh, George Heard, excellent.
So anyway, happy birthday to those two, yeah.
Probably all watch.
Wait, I, I'll let you have an item of new business in one second. Dan Hacker was my first boss.
Well, I knew.
It's a very happy birthday to him.
He was a good guy.
He was a good guy. All right, Pete, on you go, new business.
I just wanted to report, um, I represent the planning board on the revitalization committee. Milton Building Central Avenue Revitalization Committee. And for about a year, they've been meeting with the Sullivan family and their architects about, um, adding another apartment building on the Milton Hill site. And it wouldn't go through, it would eventually come to us, but basically they're going to go through the Z B A. But they've been meeting, uh, having a lot of meetings with the revitalization committee and with the neighbors and things like that, and they're zeroing in on a, a site plan and a building plan for that project. So I know Ned was talking about getting on the agenda here for an informational meeting to us probably in December, uh, before they go to the Z B A. But, uh, they'll go to the Z B A to get the building approved because that's how the Milton Hill House got there and, but then it would also be coming to us. And they asked me how the planning board was likely to receive this plan and I said I had no idea.
Well, we'll look forward to the informational session then. I think what Ned's going to do is when he comes forward for the other items, he's going to give us the information then, so. But thank you very much for the update. Anything else for this meeting?
I move we adjourn.
Just wondering who's going to say that. All those in favor? All right, thank you all very much.
Eddie, you've been quiet relative to the adjournment thing, you usually pop that in.